Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council briefing session for October 26. And Mr. Ormsby, I guess we'll send it to you.
Uh, Council President, did you?
Actually, before that.
Did you want her to take the?
I do, actually.
Did you want Carrie to take the role first?
Yes, yes, I do. I do. Go ahead.
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson. We don't see Betsy yet, but I believe she'll be joining us shortly. So at this time, Councilmember Wilkerson is absent.
Okay. Now, Mr. Ormsby.
Okay. Thank you, Council President, the members of the council and fellow staff members. On the consent agenda for November 2nd, under Reports, Contracts, and Claims, the first item we have listed is a grant award from the Department of Justice, which has been on the advanced agenda a couple of times before. And I think Council President Beggs was going to report on this item. And I would also recognize that Seth Hackenberg, the coordinator for therapeutic courses, is also on the phone if there's any other questions. Council President.
Yeah, I'll just give an update. Last time we spoke about this, I let people know that I had invited Pastor Lonnie Mitchell to convene a meeting to talk about this with community members and stakeholders. And he did that last week. And Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Cathcart and I were there, along with other folks. And I thought it was a good opportunity for people to share their thoughts and feelings about it, which was done. I don't think anyone walked out of there thinking, oh, my gosh, we have the best solution going forward. But I think my understanding was that we are going to go forward and continue to have what we have called in the past Community Court at the MLK Center at East Central for the time being, and then begin to focus on revitalization efforts for that whole area. So that's my understanding, that the kind of the block on that funding has been withdrawn with some better communication and assurances that there'll be other things for that neighborhood. So that's just my representation of it. Councilmembers Wilkerson or Cathcart could, of course, speak for themselves. Okay. Mr. Ormsby, continue on.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Council President. Next, we have a purchase of ice kickers, which is a salt-based project or product. And Clint Harris, the Streets Director, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon again, council. The Street Department's requesting the purchase of ice kicker for, uh, to be used as an on needed basis. The impact, the total cost of the city's $139 a ton, not to exceed $100,000 annually. Funding for this is included in the street operation maintenance budget. This is a salt-based product with anticoagulative inhibitors that the department uses as an additional tool during the winter months. It's used primarily down in the central business district. And I will get the information as requested by Councilmember Burke. I found the chart that had been shared previously with past councils, and I was adding a little bit more information to it, and I'll send it out to all the council people.
Thanks.
Any questions for Clint?
Also, I might have passed on the talking stick too quickly to City Attorney Ormsby. Councilmember Cathcart or Wilkerson, did you have anything on that last item that you wanted to say or not? Maybe not. Okay. All right. Great. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move to item number three. And Major Eric Olson from the Police Department is here to present the purchase of two different sets of vehicles for the Police Department. Major Olson.
I'm asking for approval of the purchase of two K8s and two Tahos. The K8s are actually essentially funded through the VA2 grants. They're replacing ones that were funded by the SIP. So the funding is established there. And the two Tahos is using funds that were from the 2018 JAG grant. Any questions on?
What?
On that?
Could you tell us the use of the Tahos? What use?
Yep. Some of our Tahos are utilized by sometimes our supervisors in the units because they can, they have more storage space. They are used by our special events staff. They get assigned sometimes to, I believe we've had a couple in the past that were assigned to officers that don't fit in the standard K8. So they are used for various purposes like that. They can be used for advent cars as well. One of the reasons that they could be used for that is because they can seat so many people, you can actually run, if you need to, a makeshift command post out of that for, say, standoffs or something, if you need something off the side of the road, which is why they make great cars for supervisors as well.
Okay. And we did get a pretty good report from Fleet on electric vehicles for police. We still need, and I don't think it got sent back to me, we need, under state law, we have to have this analysis of the cost over a lifetime of electric versus non-electric. But I just sent that email back not too long ago, so assuming we'll get that soon. Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I, um, I just thought we kind of had not unanimously agreed, but kind of had agreed that we wouldn't be giving or approving funds for the Police Department until we had the conversations around our reforms and that kind of stuff. And we haven't had that, and so I'm just wondering what's changed.
I don't, I don't know if anything has changed particularly, other than the funds before were from the, um, a different account than the SIP funding for the, or than the vehicle funding. So it was from the forfeiture account. So it was a kind of a more independent, more, um, not as much as a necessity as vehicles. But I, I say that not to disagree with you at all. So I'm just telling you, that's why it's a little different.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just gonna ask to be, move this to the legislative agenda. Um, I think the, and the people in our community who are fighting for reforms deserve to see this, and we need to show them that we are still listening and caring. Thank you.
Okay.
So just as a point of order, some of this funding is if we don't use it, we will lose it.
Okay. Yeah. Could you send us an email about that, Major Olson? And then just procedurally, for next week, this should be on the legislative agenda then. Yep. All right. Next.
Okay. Next, we have some purchases that Raylene Jeanette is here to talk about involving Fleet Services and Fleet Operations. Raylene.
Yeah, this is, uh, the first one is for the purchase of a combination sewer cleaner. It's coming in as a, as a body, it's being purchased through Owen Equipment for about $350,000. And then the chassis coming from Kenworth, $163,000, just over $517,000 for total on that one piece of equipment. And number five is also mine, and that's for the purchase of a, um, a chemical rotor, rotor. It'll have a Kenworth chassis on it, and that's $329,000. Asking for acceptance on that.
Thank you, Raylene. Does anyone have any questions for Raylene? Okay, then the next two items involve a value blanket and some contract renewals. And Chris Avrid is here to present these collectively, I guess, four items.
Good afternoon. The first item today is a two-year value blanket with National Filter Media for the purchase of fabric filter bags. They're used to remove particulate from the flue gas stream. This value blanket is for $300,000. The next item is a one-year contract renewal with online cleaning services for precision blasting. This contract renewal is for $300,000. And then the next two items are one-year contract renewals with Wemco. The first is for inspection and preventive maintenance services for auxiliary cranes, hoists, trolleys, and lifelines throughout the facility. This renewal is for $60,000. And the second is for inspection and preventive maintenance services for the two bridge cranes at the facility. This renewal is for $100,000. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next is, on the event is.
I have a quick question on that one.
Sure.
Chris, this is Karen Stratton. On, um, the ones you just went through, number A, the online cleaning services.
Yes.
Was there anybody local that applied for that contract? Because that's out of California. I was just wondering if we had any local folks.
No, the online cleaning services was the only response we received. We do source the demolition material locally, but the company that actually applies it is based out of California. And to my knowledge, they're one of the few on the West Coast.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Sorry to jump the gun. There is any, are there any other council members that have questions? Okay, great. Uh, next we'll move to item eight, which is the proposed interlocal agreement between Spokane Public Schools for the Engineering Construction Management Office Relocation Project, which Kyle Tugig and Elizabeth Shadle presented at the committee meeting. And as you recall, this is to a deal with the relocation of a facility that's on the site for the proposed, about-to-be-constructed Northeast Middle School off of North Foothills Drive. Not much more I could add to that that Kyle and Elizabeth didn't share with you earlier today, but are there any additional questions or concerns before we move on? Okay, great. Thanks. Next, item number nine is a proposed contract for federal CARES funding from Spokane County for homeless shelters. And Tim Sigler, I'm sorry, we had Chris Green on the agenda, but it's actually Tim Sigler from CHHS who is here to present this item. Tim.
Hey, thank you. Yes, so in July of this year, the Spokane Board of County Commissioners approved a $700,000 allocation to the city of Spokane for the CARES Act funding to improve homeless shelters located at 55 West Mission and 527 South Cannon. The BOC awarded an additional, uh, BOC, the BOC awarded an additional $900,000 to the city of Spokane for this project, which is a total of 1.6 million. So as we worked through this process of getting these buildings up to healthy sheltering standards, we were unfortunately unable to spend the normal amount of time that we would do with our architects, our engineers, our general contractors. And so we just needed to get into the buildings, figure out what, what we needed to improve to get to that point. And so during that short period of time, several issues that were unexpected came up, such as like asbestos in the floors or some in the ceilings, as well as some structural components specifically with Cannon. And so the need was higher than what we originally expected. And so the funding allocated to the city will be used for eligible costs identified with the CARES Act. And at this point, we are requesting approval of a revenue contract for CARES Act funding from Spokane County and the associated SBO for the budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, but now.
Councilmember Cathcart.
I'm wondering, is, is with this additional necessary funding, is Cannon still the most cost-effective option? Or if we knew this in advance, would a different location have been more, more cost-effective?
Are you talking in hindsight, or are you, are you saying?
Either. I mean, what I'm wondering, is this, is this additional 1.6 going to kind of, I mean, really, I know it's coming from federal CARES dollars, but, but is it really going to kind of grow that budget to the point that we would have had a better option somewhere else?
Well, I think, thanks, council member. I think that is the issue, that at that time, we didn't have better options for building selection, especially with Cannon. We owned the building at that time, and we knew there had to be some renovations done. Most of the construction is already complete at Cannon as well as Mission. So we have other COVID-related funds that could have been used towards this, but because the county approved this, we can now, and I'm speaking about CDBG COVID funds, we can use those towards programming rather than capital costs and construction to meet priorities identified through our CEJ test board using CDBG.
No, I think that's, and I'm certainly glad that is allocating some of these CARES dollars to go towards this need. I mean, certainly, it's, it's, uh, it makes a ton of sense that it's the right place to go, but I'm just kind of curious about the global, the global picture. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah. Councilmember Wilkerson. So is this to continue to build out the shelter on West Mission in addition to the Cannon shelter?
Yeah, so the, the construction costs, I can just speak to those briefly. On the Mission site, if you've been in there before, it was just basically office space on the top floor of the building. And to create additional health, healthy sheltering space, we needed to remove pretty much all of the offices. So it's just a big open floor with the appropriate type of flooring that's easy to clean, as well as including bathrooms and showers upstairs, and some hand washing stations and a few other things. For the Cannon site, it's pretty much the same thing. We needed to open up as much as we could of the three different bays of that building, and also adding showers and bathrooms to that site. Some of the things with Cannon that we had to deal with that have been around for a while, we just, again, we didn't have the time that we would normally go through to, to finish the normal process. But because this is under the emergency ordinance, we were able to get in there soon. So that's what these funds are being used for. Like I said, most of the projects are complete. We're just waiting on some parts and pieces that we had to get shipped in from places, and it's pretty hard to get some of those things. But we're getting closer to where we need to be to open up Cannon and tomorrow, I believe, actually, the construction wall for the showers and the bathrooms at West Mission will be going down. So there'll be new side access to those things. Did I answer your question?
Yes, yes, you did. Thank you.
I was just gonna.
Any other questions or issues on this topic?
I was just going to mention that when we bought Cannon, if I recall, Tim, we were planning on using it temporarily without a lot of reconstruction for seasonal sheltering, and then we were going to turn it into a permanent use shelter. But now that we're turning it into a permanent adult shelter with day services in the off-season, it's a different construction footprint than we had originally imagined, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much correct. And the footprint will continue to change. There's still going to be some updates that need to be made in the long term for the seasonal type shelter, has outreach components to it. But these funds specifically were to get the building up to what we believe was appropriate for meeting the needs for social distancing for the foreseeable future.
Yeah. Good. All right. Back to you.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Item 10 is the First Amendment to a Purchase and Sale Agreement for Gonzaga Haven LLC. And I don't see Dave Steele on the phone, but there's a couple of identified call-in individuals. So Dave, are you one of those? Okay, not seeing that he is. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or speak to any concerns that the council may have. This basically extends the closing date and deals with a couple of other issues. One, to the benefit of the city, specifying that a corner of the property is available for the city to use, and dealing with some other right-of-way issues that benefit Gonzaga Haven. And they were issues identified through the due diligence process that need to be resolved. And John Pilcher, representing Catholic Charities and the LLC that is doing the development, has been working with city individuals, primarily James Richmond in our office, to get this document finalized and hope to have it approved at the next meeting, aiming for a closing toward the end of November.
Not seeing any questions?
And if there are any other issues or questions, please don't hesitate to contact me, and I'll work with Dave to get whatever information you need back to whoever requests it. Next, we have the placeholder items we typically have. The first is the report of the mayor, including claims and payments for all city operations, including parks and library, and then payroll claims. All of those blanks will be filled in prior to the meeting next week. And then finally, we have a placeholder item for city council meeting minutes that will also be completed prior to the meeting next week. Now, going to the legislative agenda, and this is the time of year where there's a lot of budget and other issues to deal with. The first is the special budget ordinances, and the first one is a special budget ordinance relating to municipal court. And this relates to the item that was previously reported on by Council President Beggs. And Paul and Josie's here, if anyone had any other issues or questions regarding the specifics of this particular proposed SBO. Okay, next is an SBO for the Community Development Block Grant Funds that relates to care funds that Tim Sigler from CHHS just reported on. And Tim, I see is still on the phone, and Paul's here as well, if anyone has any questions regarding that SBO. Okay, not seeing any. I'll move to resolution and final reading ordinances. First is a resolution regarding condemning of the Organization and Assembly of Private Militia Groups. And I think the council, uh, Legislative Director was going to present on this item, and I don't, oh, I see, Brian is on the phone. So Brian McClatchy from the council office is presenting this item.
Oh, apologies for the strange background. Can remove it. Uh, so this resolution, um, is intended to provide some publicity surrounding two provisions of state law, which make the public assembly of private militias unlawful. At the very end of the resolution, it requests that the legal department look into ways to incorporate this provision into state law, into the city's law as well.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. McClatchy? Okay, then the next item is one that the council's seen before, and it regards the franchise with the Yellowstone Pipeline Company, and that is set to come back again to the council at your meeting next Monday. And Tim Zamblin from our office has been working on that, and I think others from the council staff may have been as well. And so if there, if there are any issues or questions, particularly of our office, please let us know prior to next week. We'll be happy to answer them. I don't know, Mr. McClatchy or Council President, if, if either one of you or any other member of the council or staff have anything to say on that item.
First, I excuse Mr. Zamblin today. I told him he didn't need to be here since he's briefed it multiple times. We do have a draft potential ordinance.
Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
Okay.
Thanks, Councilmember Burke.
Am I off? Maybe I'm off.
I don't know that any of our questions have been answered from weeks ago. At least they haven't for me. So I'm not sure what has changed. Perhaps Councilmember Beggs, also President, could fill us in on that.
Yes. What, so I don't think we've gotten any more information, but what Policy Director McClatchy has done is put together a draft ordinance that would control such petroleum franchise agreements going forward. And he is circulating that, probably later today or tomorrow, for people to look at. It addresses comprehensively all sorts of things, but mostly it focuses on what the liability insurance requirements are, and also what the annual costs should be. So it's an ordinance based on one that has been known to comply with the federal laws that pretty much limit what cities can do. You can't do anything on safety, but there are some things you can do. So I don't think the overall questions, legal questions have been answered, Councilmember Kinnear, other than we found a community that Richmond, California, and the East Bay of the San Francisco Bay, which has a lot of oil refinery activity, has something that we're going to circulate. So I don't expect it to be, if your question is, I don't expect it to be enacted next week, is my, is perhaps the answer to your question. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
If that's the case, should we defer it now?
We certainly can.
What's an appropriate deferral time? Mr. McClatchy, do you have a suggestion?
I would say 30 days. Once I circulate the proposed ordinance, it's pretty lengthy and provides a lot of detail about the process by which council would consider and approve pipeline franchises. So that's going to take some work in committee and some, and some other review. It's at a pretty early draft stage right now, so at least 30 days.
So I'll move to defer till November 30th? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. It's deferred till November 30th. Be on the lookout for draft ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. And next, our Director of Public Works and Utilities, Scott Simmons, is here to present three ordinances relating to solid waste, disposal, recycling, and rates. Scott.
And these were briefed last week. This is just the, uh, the final reading of the ordinance. And they'll be briefed in hearing on the 2nd of November at council's legislative agenda.
Any additional questions or issues at this point? And also, I'm sure Scott and his colleagues would invite any questions or comments you have in advance of the presentation and hearings next week. Okay, seeing, not seeing any now. We'll move to first reading ordinances. And first is a, an ordinance adopting the six-year citywide capital improvement program for the years 21 through 26. And Paul and Josie, our budget officer, is here to present this item. Paul. and Jozie, our budget officer, is here to present this item. Paul?
Good afternoon, City Council. As Mike just perfectly described, this would be the ordinance for the citywide CIP for the years 2021 through 2026. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is an item relating to pretreatment requirements. And Scott Simmons is down to present this item, but Mike Cannon is on the phone joining us. So I would ask Mike, since he's here, if he could brief on this item.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. So this is an ordinance amendment for the industrial pretreatment program, which was spearheaded by Angie Tagnani, our pretreatment supervisor. So essentially, it's addressing new regulations, program updates, and a model ordinance language, as well as striking some sections that to be repealed as no longer applicable. And then some enlisted pretreatment fees have been removed from SMC 1303A and will be separately adopted as a public rule. And then some typographical errors were corrected where needed. And are there any specific questions?
We had a-
Thank you.
We had a briefing just a couple hours ago, so it's not, nothing personal that we don't have any questions. Thanks.
It's okay.
And then the next four ordinances relate to rates in wastewater, water, sewer, and other issues relating to rates for capital charges. And Scott Simmons, our Director of Utilities and Public Works, is here to present those items.
Yes, good afternoon, Council. You had a briefing, a presentation by Marlene Feis today at our PIES committee. So we'll be brief on this, mostly for the benefit of the other members from public that might be listening. The four ordinances, one is related to water. That ordinance is to include a 2.9% increase to existing rates. It also includes revising tiered structures for residential usage. That really looks at some of those higher water users. The wastewater and stormwater rates are also slated for a 2.9% increase. And we have included revisions to update our disposal rates for septic haulers. The ordinance on capital adds capital rates for water-only and sewer-only customers, which have already been contemplated in our SMC. And this is just some cleanup of those that were not getting assessed a proportionate share of the capital rates. And then finally, there's an ordinance for PDA rates that aligns with our interlocal agreements and codifies specific rates within our public development authorities for customers within. And as Mike mentioned, the pretreatment ordinance will have a separate rulemaking process for the rates, as well as our water and cap fees.
Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the final here, or the final item for next week, and that is the proposed public hearing on the 2017 proposed budget. And Paul, you're on again.
Good afternoon, again, City Council. These would just set the hearing dates for the 2021.
All right.
I'm sorry, this is the actual hearing.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda for November 2nd, 2020?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved. That brings us to tonight's agenda. Before we get to the consent items, there's a few things. One, I believe Mr. McClatchy had circulated a substitute ordinance for the TIF extension, which is ordinance number 35879. The one posted on our website is back from last December. There have been several community meetings and adjustments. So there's a motion to-
Council President?
Yeah.
Council President, can I make one quick comment?
Yep.
So the document that I sent around had two small comments that had to be handled, incorporated, taken care of. And literally, right now, there are emails back and forth between myself and James Richmond and Laura McElum-
Okay.
-to make sure that those comments are appropriately addressed in the document. They're just cleanups, but I'm waiting to hear the finals, so.
So let's wait on that, then, probably.
With leave, maybe you would substitute the version once those are completed. And they should be completed at any moment, but-
Okay.
-I wouldn't want you to substitute a document and then have to do it again at such.
Thanks for that input. So-
Yep.
Let's hold on that for a moment. And then there's a resolution number 079, having to do with budget priorities for council. And as I mentioned at our council retreat on Friday, the administration and council's budget subcommittee are fully engaged in negotiations. And I'm looking for a motion to defer this indefinitely because so many things have changed, and more things will change. I think we've gotten the engagement we wanted. And at a minimum, we should probably wait a couple of weeks until we get the next version of the budget before we take a vote on whatever's left. So I don't know if there's a motion out there to defer indefinitely.
I'll move the table indefinitely.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's tabled indefinitely. And then there is also, on tonight's agenda, a number 77, which is the two-year pilot project of 20 miles per hour around parks. And the existing resolution removes that designation for Audubon because they already have school radar 20 miles per hour that they would like instead. And in the resolution, it was a substitute to add in Corbin Park. But there was some discussion about adding in, I want to say, I'm not going to get the park right, but Shiloh Hills.
Shiloh, Shiloh Hills.
And?
And Thornton Murphy.
Okay. So just wanting to confirm that, from District One, councilmembers, that you wanted the Shiloh Hills Park in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they approved it as a neighborhood and requested that they be included.
So I think I'm just looking for an amendment to the resolution to add Shiloh Hills Park and Thornton Murphy Park. Does anyone want to make that resolution?
I'll so move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment language, which includes Thornton Murphy and Shiloh Hills Parks, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, that is so amended. We'll vote on that later tonight. And I'm still holding on hope for an email on the TIF, but why don't we go ahead and do the consent agenda?
Did you want to take actions to approve the change in dollar amount for ordinance C 35953 and Resolution 2020 0075 to $1,500,000?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. So that is another request. If you look at special budget ordinance to amend the amount to $1.5 million, is there a motion to make that amendment?
I move.
Okay, and let's make it for both a special budget ordinance and Resolution 75. Is that still moved that way, Councilmember Burke? Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
About a second. Is there a second out there?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? Okay, abstentions? All right, those are amended. Okay. All right, now we're at the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, setting a hearing for the citywide capital improvement program 2021 to 2026 on November 9, 2020. Number two, setting the hearings for review of the 2021 proposed budget beginning November 2, 2020, and continuing thereafter at the regular city council meetings through December 7, 2020. Item number three, report of the mayor of Penney, N. Claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through October 16, 2020. Total $5,536,376.66 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $4,814,120.63. B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through October 17, 2020. $7,248,694.48. Item number four, city council meeting minutes for October 12, 2020. Item number five, withdraw hearings scheduled for November 9, 2020, under Resolutions 2020-73 and 2020-74 pertaining to the downtown parking and business improvement area regarding changing certain assessment rates and modifying the boundary.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved. And Mr. McClatchy, if we haven't heard back yet, we can just take it up at 6 o'clock, as far as substituting, I think, so.
That's correct.
Yep.
There's one little item I need to make sure whether we have to include it or not. Otherwise, we're good to go.
Okay, well, we'll just let everyone know at 6 o'clock, we've done a little bit of media outreach to let people know on social media that the posted version is not the most correct one, so that people understand that. And with that, we'll be adjourned, and we'll see at least all the council members here back at 6:00 p.m. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.